Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular board meeting, September eighteenth, two thousand and seven, at five thirty P.M. here at the Administration Building, nineteen hundred Price Road. Please rise for a moment of silence, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one nation.
Thank you very much. We're, uh, little by little, we're learning the Texas pledge after they've changed it.
Yeah, I see that's, uh, they say under God.
Right. Moving on to item four, roll call. Uh, Mr. Lehman will not be joining us. He's out of town. And Mr. Colunga, I don't know if he may be showing up a little later. I have a, uh, he didn't call. Uh, item five, recommend approving the agenda of the regular board meetings of September eighteenth, two thousand and seven, and eight. Delusions or corrections, Mr. Gonzalez?
Uh, as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion by Mr. Cortez, again by Mr. Aguilar, in favor, raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item six, Superintendent's Report, A Conference Presentation, one. Presentation of the Texas Educator Excellence Award, Cycle Two Campus Plan Presentations, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Escobar, and members of the board. Before I get into this presentation, I just want to introduce one new member of our team. Uh, he joins us today. He'll be handing up the hand of cluster, uh, Dr. Carl Montoya. Dr. Montoya, welcome. As far as the conference presentation, as you well know, the Texas Educator Excellence Award is about teachers and getting money, and we're gonna have Dr. Cavazos, which is now in curriculum instruction, and we overseeing this to give this presentation. Dr. Cavazos?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Escobedo, and members of the board. I want to thank our staff, Mr. Garcia and Ms. Renfro, for their due diligence in this work. And we're actually gonna have Ms. Renfro come to the podium and do the presentation. Ms. Renfro?
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Escobedo, Superintendent Gonzalez, and board members and audience. It is with great pleasure today that we've, uh, fulfilled the final part of the requirements of the Texas Educator Excellence Award Grants for Cycle Two. As you have probably learned by now, the purpose of these grants is provide assistance of financial incentives to our educators. Campuses became eligible based on ranking in the top one half of the highest percentages of educationally disadvantaged students, and were then ranked based on their either rating of exemplary or recognized or being in the top quartile with respect to comparable improvement in math and reading. And funding was then provided to the top several hundred campuses based on these rankings. The Texas Education Agency requires that these grants be developed primarily by our teachers, approved by a majority of their campus staff, and then approved by a vote of the District Education Improvement Committee. All these criteria have been met. At this time now, those campuses' plans are being presented to the board as the require- as required by the grant. Uh, just as a reminder, seventy-five percent of these funds must be given to our teachers, and these are designed to help these teachers have an incentive to improve student performance in objective, quantifiable measures, as well as based on their collaboration activities. The remaining twenty-five percent of this funding may be used in a variety of ma- of ways, however, all of our campuses have elected to use them as incentives to other paraprofessionals and certified staff members. The eleven campuses represented here tonight for this happen to be Rivetta High School, Garcia Middle School, Champion Elementary, Del Castillo Elementary, Egley Elementary, Gallegos Elementary, Garza Elementary, Palm Grove Elementary, Martin Elementary, Skinner Elementary, and Southmost Elementary. We're very proud of those campuses and look forward to working with them as they go forward in accomplishing their grants this year. If the board has any questions, I'll be glad to, uh, answer them for you, or we also have campus representatives here to answer specific.
Questions, comments from the board?
One question.
Mr. Powers?
Thank you, uh, Dr. Escobedo. This is the only question I have is once again, uh, the teachers that were there on those campuses and they've been moved to another, they lose out on it, right?
I believe that's correct, and that's, that's part of the grant criteria, and that's sort of stated by the state, not even, not controlled by local.
Okay, so there's nothing we can do about it? So, alright.
It depends in part on the campus plan, but since these are one-year grants, if they aren't on the campus during the one year in which they implement and meet the eligibility criteria, then they would not be eligible to receive the grant. This is different than the original three-year grant.
Oh, okay. So it's only the fiscal year then? Alright.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Renfro?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Renfro, and congratulations to our campus that continue to excel. Uh, Dr. Montoya, welcome. Moving on to item two, Presentation of Financial Report for July two thousand and seven, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Escobar, and members of the board. Um, this is our first financial report for this fiscal year, and, uh, if there's any questions, uh, me either myself or Mr. Sanchez will be glad to answer them.
Questions, comments from the board? If not, we move on to item three, Presentation on Report from BISD Bond Oversight Committee, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Escobar, and members of the board. Um, you well know the bond oversight meets on the first Thursday of each month, and they, they, they meet and they go over items, and usually me and Mr. Tapia or Mr. Sanchez, on occasion I will make those meetings, and, uh, then they report back to the board anything they might have or any concerns. So at this time, I'd like to call Mr. Mike Rodriguez, which is the chairperson for the Bond Oversight Committee, to do a presentation. Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Escobedo, and members of the board. I'm here on behalf of the Bond Oversight Committee as the chairman to make the monthly report, uh, to you of what we have been reviewing. I know it's been a couple of months since we've been here, however, much of the work during the summer was devoted to, uh, receiving financial reports with respect to the expenditures for the bond funds. Most of those bond fund expenditures dealt primarily with architectural services, and the architects, as you are well aware, are in the process of rendering their, uh, designs to, uh, drawings. And, uh, as a result, the Bond Oversight Committee did not do a lot of work during the months of, uh, the summertime. We, we just simply received these, uh, financial reports. However, last month, the, uh, uh, PBK, the architecture, were selected to handle the project wherein the middle school and elementary school campuses were combined into one piece of property, presented their initial designs to the Bond Oversight Committee. Uh, the, the designs were very, very good, uh, as we expect from, from architects of that, uh, ability. The, uh, there were some issues that they're grappling with right now with respect to ingress and egress, uh, to the site, specifically dealing with, uh, Alton Gore Road, but we're, we're fairly certain right now that they will have those, uh, issues hammered out and, and ironed out prior to final, uh, planning of the, of that site. With respect to, uh, the Bond Oversight Committee's receipt of expenditure of funds, as I mentioned earlier, most of the funds that have been expended to date have been expended, uh, with the architects as they're, you know, working on their designs. However, there were some expenditures and have been some expenditures made with respect to actual work being done on the wing additions, uh, and that was all planned. Everything seems to be in order. Uh, we're receiving very good response from all of the questions that we have from Mr. Sanchez as well as Mr. Tapia. Both Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Tapia are very, very prepared for our meetings. Uh, we appreciate that as members of the Bond Oversight Committee. We appreciate their help, and we, we appreciate their knowledge with respect to answering all the questions that we do have. Uh, lastly, today, uh, I need to report pursuant to our bylaws that Mariano Bean Ayala has submitted his resignation to me as chairman of the Bond Oversight Committee. I know he's already called you, Dr. Escobedo, uh, to inform you, but it's, uh, required under our bylaws that I make this formal announcement to you, Mr. Gonzalez, so that you could then, uh, start the process to have somebody new appointed. Mr. Ayala regrets to, to leaving the committee, however, he had to do so because he's now taken over, uh, his new position as chairman, excuse me, as, uh, president and C.E.O. of the Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau, and he needs to vote most of his time to, to, to his new job. And, uh, we're sorry to see him go. He was a very valuable member of the committee, but he's now serving the citizens of Brownsville in another capacity, and we look forward to whoever you appoint next, Dr. Escobedo. Uh, that's all we have. We, we are under the impression, and, and believe it to be right, that, uh, the next coming months are gonna be filled with a lot of work for us as the architects begin to move out of the design phase and we start to bid projects out. Uh, we've been told that by Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Tapia, and, um, we expect to be very, very busy with a lot lengthier report the next time we come to you, uh, but I'm here, ready to answer any questions should you have any.
Questions, comments from the board? Thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez. We appreciate the time and effort you've invested into the Bond Oversight Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for all your work. Uh, however, I do want to say that as, as we go through, I would invite the Bond Oversight Committee members to join the Facilities Committee when we present everything to the Facilities Committee. As soon as Mr. Lehman gets back, which is the chairperson of the Facilities Committee, we're gonna have a Facilities Committee meeting to bring you all completely up to date on where we're at. And we ask the Bond Oversight to be here at the same time as a joint meeting, if they can, a special meeting, and be able to put everything together and ask a lot of questions to the architect, but both the board members and the Bond Oversight Committee. So we're looking forward to that.
Yes, sir. We've been advised by Mr. Sanchez to do so and to be ready to be, to be present at that meeting, and, uh, the board will receive the, uh, renderings that we've seen recently at that Facilities Committee.
Good. We look forward to working together.
Yes, sir. Same here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Moving on to item four, Presentation of Proposed Vehicle Purchases Districtwide for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Seven, Two Thousand and Eight, Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobar, and members of the board. It, as you see in the backup, we, we're gonna go ahead and pursue the purchase of vehicles that we need in the district. They have all been budgeted for. They're, all have budgeted funds attached to them. If you have any questions on those, we'd be more than glad to answer them.
Questions, comments from the board? If not, we move on to item five, Presentation on Reporting of Fees Paid to Cooperatives Include Memberships, Management, and Transport, Trans-, uh, Transaction Fees for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Six, Two Thousand and Seven, Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobar, and members of the board. This is now a new requirement of law. We have to tell you what we pay for fees for co-ops and so on and so forth, so we're, we're putting that out to you. If you have any questions, at this time, we'd like to answer them, or if you have any questions later on, we'd be glad to answer them, however you want to do it. But this is oh-six, oh-seven. This has already been paid. This is not to be paid, but already been paid.
Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Dr. Escobar. The only thing that caught my eye was Region One Library. The fees, a hundred and forty-five thousand, we only purchased seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Why is the fee so high versus Region One Food? We spent ten million in purchases, and we only spent sixteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one.
If, if I may, Dr. Escobar, you, that's the re- that's the same question I asked. Um, so you're not the only one that's wondering. And, uh, the thing about it is, is, Mr. Powers, it, there's more than fees included in there. There's a lot of services. And, uh, so I think, uh, Dr. Cavazos got together with Mr. Rosas today, and what we'll, we'll do on the Friday later, we'll send you out exactly the breakdown of the fees and the services on that. It's more services than fees.
Okay, that hits you on the fees versus, okay.
Yes.
That's good enough.
But they had to put it all together into one.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we move on to B, Standing Board Agenda Items, Six, Board Calendars, Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobar, and members of the board. I, there's a few things that, that we're gonna go over concerning the board calendar. And of course, well, as always, we'll, our staff will be sending out reminders on things that you need to, to do, but I'd also like to do it for the general public. Uh, we do have a, uh, this week, uh, on, uh, Thursday, we have a big welcome-back district parental meeting at nine-thirty A.M. at the, at the Brownsville Event Center, so I'm looking forward, if, if board members can come at nine-thirty, we'd be glad to have you there. It's getting our parents involved. It's, it's welcoming back our parents, and we have a, a big event there. Um, also, I know it's not there, but at six P.M., board training in Harlingen, board members, you need to be here at five if you wanna ride. If you're not gonna ride with us, then you can drive to Harlingen on your own, but I'll have a Suburban ready to go at five o'clock. We'll be leaving at five, five oh five. It's this Thursday also. It's Thursday. It's, it's a requirement, it's a legislative update, so please, uh, please be there. Uh, next Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, is, uh, BISD College Parent Night, six-thirty P.M. at the Brownsville Event Center. It's always nice to inform the parents about colleges and, and what's going on there is concerning their kids, so we look forward to, to being there, and if any of you can be there, I'd be glad to, to be with you. I will be making a visit there also. Uh, of course, the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth, all of us, I think, are going to the TSA, TASB convention in Dallas, so looking forward to that. On the Saturday, October the sixth, is a very important date. It's the Buddy Fun Meet at Sam Stadium, and, uh, we hope to be there, and, uh, it's at eight, starts at eight o'clock, and looking forward to everybody being there at the Buddy Fun Meet. And then, for the first time since I can remember, we'll be having open house at the time we don't have a board meeting. Uh, it'll be on the eighth, ninth, and eleventh of October. On the eighth, it'll be middle school open house. On the ninth, it's a high school open house, and on the eleventh, it's elementary school open house. So I'm looking forward to being to all the open houses, and this time, we won't interfere with any board meetings. We're able to get it right, so, uh, I'm looking forward to anything, to all these things that are coming up, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Questions, comments from the board? Mrs. Galavan?
If I'd like to have a curriculum meeting, um, in October?
Anytime. Do you want me to just select a date and let you know?
Just select a-
Okay. Any other question that comes from the board? If not, we move on to item seven, Public Audience. Do we have public audience? Yes, we do. Uh, the next item on our agenda is a public comment period. This is a time for citizen, staff, or students to provide their comments to the board. Statements and questions from the audience will not be permitted during the portion of the meeting, so please let us hear from you now if you wish, uh, your comments to, if you have your comments to present. To every comment heard tonight, your name and the subject matter of your comments must appear in a signing sheet which is located in the rear of the meeting room. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes to complete his or her comments, and with all due courtesy, I will strictly enforce this time limit. If a group of people want to be heard on the same topic, the board asks that they designate a spokesperson to avoid needless repetition. The board has adopted rules to preclude the abuse of open form by, for example, anyone uselessly repeating the same comment or complaint meeting after meeting. All participants must understand that if your comment in my judgment constitutes a complaint against an employee or an officer, I will interrupt you and ask you to, and direct you to proceed with best the formal grievance procedures, be that DGBA, FNG, or GF Local. With those cautions in mind, we will now be glad to hear your comments. Our first speaker is George Borrego, and there is no subject to be discussed.
Good evening, uh, Dr. Escobedo, Board President, uh, Board Members, and Administration. My name is George Borrego. I'm representing the Association of Brownsville Educators, which is affiliated with the Texas State Teachers Association and the National Education Association. We'd like to thank the board for a job well done in selecting the best TPA and insurance carrier for a BISD. Special thanks to Mr. Ruben Cortez for assuring the district will receive all the discounts and guarantees regarding our insurance contract. So let's go forward with this new insurance company. Change is sometimes good. Last week, when Mr. Aguilar spoke thanking departments for getting BISD off to a good start, he unintentionally left out the Security Department, and that was not on purpose, and they are doing a great job, and they're starting to staff our elementaries, and, uh, we also recognize their, their effort. The Association of Brownsville Educators will also continue to work with Administration on finding a solution to increase all BISD stipends. The Association will work hard to ensure that all of our employees receive increases in their stipends for the two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine school year, when we start talking about the budget. And finally, the, uh, grant from the governor, while we will accept the checks and we will cash them as soon as possible, we still do not agree with the program. I was sitting in the teacher's lounge this afternoon, or during lunch, and there was a very disappointed teacher there who, uh, apparently during the school year had missed a couple of meetings, uh, board meetings, not board meetings, sorry, uh, department meetings, and therefore got a call during the summer that he had not qualified for the grant, even though the scores were up and all other indicators were there. And he could not, or chose not, to come in during the summer to make up that time. That grant is designed to create these kinds of problems, uh, problems between teachers and staff, and, uh, it's, it's, it's not good. You already give us incentive, don't you? Every twenty-fifth, I get my incentive, and you've been generous with our raises for the past few years, so we're doing well in that respect. Our incentive is there, and our other incentive you could never affect, and that is our love for the children, and the fact that we're there most of the time because of the, of the children that we take care of. So that's our incentive, not the money that the governor grants us. It's divisive, and, and, uh, it's not good. So, uh, what do I say? Thanks for the money, but we're gonna cash it, but we really didn't want it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Moises Gonzalez, School Zones and School Textbooks.
Good afternoon, board members and the general public president today. My name is Moises Gonzalez. I come to here today, uh, as a father of, uh, three children and one seventeen, one seventeen-year-old who my wife and I are legal guardians of, and, uh, attend BISD. We've made some efforts, Superintendent, to try to meet with you, and, uh, unfortunately, I know that the beginning of the year, very busy, and I wanted to bring some of these issues to you in, in your office, but I think it's important that, uh, the board and, and the general public be made, made aware of some of the issues that concern my wife and I, uh, as parents of, of children in BISD. Uh, for example, there's still some students that are attending class and have portables, and, and we're concerned about that because, fortunately, we've had one of the wettest years in, in, in recent, uh, years, but, uh, that also exposes the, uh, children to be, getting wet, and also, uh, some security issues with, uh, the portables being away from the building. Those are issues that still concern us. I've heard several board members, uh, campaign on those issues, and, uh, I hope that they still, uh, work towards resolving those issues with the portables. Uh, also, Dr. Escobedo, if you could warn me when I have a one, one minute left, please, I'd appreciate that. And, uh, we, we're concerned with, with, uh, substitute teachers for entire semesters, and that, uh, that doesn't provide for the continuity and the advantages of having a dedicated teacher for that class, and, and we've had that situation with some of our children. Uh, another thing that, that we've been adamantly working on for the past two years is to have a school zone designated for Ortiz Elementary and Alton Gore. We have all these projects, and, uh, we have a Bond Oversight Committee looking at the schools that are gonna be put, and there's gonna be all this traffic and, and everything going on Alton Gore. Well, that, Alton Gore is fifty-five miles an hour right now, and the main entrance to Ortiz Elementary, there is no school zone. There is no reduction in speed limit, fifty-five miles an hour. We have buses lining up in the turning lane while traffic is zipping by at fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five miles an hour. Uh, this issue, I'm, I'm, I spoke, uh, my, my wife's, uh, mentioned this to you, uh, uh, Mr. Superintendent, in, uh, one of the coffees you had, and we hope that you continue to look into it. Uh, we contacted Tech Dot, we contacted city officials, and unfortunately, everybody points the finger at each other, says this isn't our responsibility, it's Tech Dot. Tech Dot says it's not our responsibility, it's the city. City, contact BISD. BISD says we can't do anything about it 'cause it's a state highway. It's Tech Dot. I, I really, I'm not, I, I don't want someone to blame, I just want someone to take care of it. Okay? This is a safety issue, and if we don't have safety for our children, then everything else is unimportant. Primary safety issue, so please, please have someone look into that. It's something that's been going on, uh, and ultimate responsibility, in my opinion, is the school boards, because you are, are linked to the other government entities to get the job done, to get that school zone designation. Uh, I also received a, a phone call from the Galaxy Program. Uh, that was, uh, that bothered me quite a bit, 'cause my child wasn't able to participate in, uh, the Galaxy Program because, uh, in the Fine Arts Division, because there was not a certified music teacher at Ortiz Elementary. Well, I come to know that that vacancy's been there for two years, and for two years, we have not been able to recruit a certified music teacher for that position, and therefore my child won't be able, and other children who wanna participate in the Fine Arts Program won't be able to, because of, of, there's a teacher in that position, just that the Galaxy Program, from what I was explained, requires a certified music teacher. Student-teacher ratio, uh, my seventeen-year-old sister-in-law of, who were legal guardians, uh, mentioned to me they have forty-five children in the classroom, to the point where some of them have to sit on the floor. And I understand there's scheduling conflicts, and they're, and they're working to alleviate that, but the issue is, is that they still have too many kids in the classroom, where some of them don't have desks, and they're, they're being asked to sit and fold, and fold, uh, fold-out chairs. That's an issue that needs to be addressed, and these are issues that need to be addressed now at the beginning of school year.
Forty seconds, sir.
Ultimately, this is something that's very important, and this is an insult to me. Mr. Superintendent, board members, this is, was a flat-out insult, as a taxpayer and as a parent of, of, of children in BISD. This is in economics workbook given out at Pace High School. When I looked at this workbook, the answers are all filled. Has all the answers. I said, this gotta be a mistake, someone made a mistake, someone gave this on accident. Well, I look at it, and there's names of students from two previous years. I'm all for technology, but when we're wasting three hundred thousand dollars on a GPS system, our children don't have textbooks, I have a problem with that. So, please, don't reduce my taxes. I'll give you my tax money, but just give my child a textbook or workbook that they can work with.
Thank you very much, sir. That concludes our public ad, uh, comment period. Our next, uh, item is item eight, closed meeting, pursuant to Texas Department Code Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four and five-five-one-point-zero-eight-two. Board goes into closed session to discuss item seven, Level Three Grievance Marilyn Meton, uh, number zero-zero-six-dash-zero-seven-slash-zero-eight, and Level Three Grievance Belinda Garcia, number zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-seven-slash-zero-eight. Board goes to closed session. The board reconvenes after closed session. Moving on to item nine, Board Action Level Three Grievance Marilyn Meton, number zero-zero-six dash zero-seven-slash-zero-eight, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? The item dies for lack of motion. Mr. Powers?
I would like to reflect that, uh, I recuse myself from closed meeting and I did not deliberate.
So noted, thank you. Moving on to item ten, Board Action Level Three Grievance Belinda Garcia, number zero-zero-seven dash zero-seven-slash-zero-eight, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? The item dies for lack of motion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Powers?
If that directly reflects that I recuse myself from closed meeting and I did not deliberate.
So noted, thank you. Uh, moving on to consent agenda, I have received a list from my colleagues indicating that there is a need to discuss and deliberate the following agenda items. Uh, number twelve, these items that we will be discussing, number twelve, fourteen, seventeen, thirty-one, and forty-one. Twelve, fourteen, seventeen, thirty-one, and forty-one. I will now entertain a motion to accept, uh, to approve the recommendation of administration as reflected on the, these items. Motion from Mr. Aguilar, do I have a second by Mr. Powers? In favor, raise your right hand. I'll oppose, extensions?
I'm, I'm, uh, I, um, voting yes on it, I'm sorry.
Okay, the most, uh, the, uh, consent agenda passes unanimously.
It's time.
Moving on to item twelve, Recommend Approval of the Resolution Number Zero-One-Two-Slash-zero-seven dash zero-eight for the appointment of an individual to serve on the Cameron County Appraisal District Board Directors, Mr. Gonzalez?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Escobar, and members of the board. This is a requirement. We have a, a place on the appraisal district, and, uh, it's up to you all to decide who's gonna represent BISD on the appraisal district board.
I, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the term expires in December.
Thank you, Dr. Escobar. Uh, uh, the reason why they have the two-year term, because, uh, Mr. Mignolet served one year, and I've been on there only ten months, so, uh, I'm, I'm pretty much would like to go ahead and continue serving at least for two years, and I would like my colleagues to support that.
Any other, Mr. and Mrs. Galavan?
I, uh, I'd like to say that I'd support, uh, Mr. Otis to ser- continue serving.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Aguilar?
Uh, yes, I would like to make a motion to appoint someone, a candidate.
Okay.
Otis Powers?
I have a motion by Mr. Aguilar to appoint Mr. Powers for, uh, to serve on the Cameron County.
A second, Mr. Galavan, in favor, raise your right hand.
Motion passing unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Powers.
Go with us.
We can complain to you about taxes, and what can we complain to you about?
I will send you to the review board.
Uh, moving on to item fourteen, Recommend Approval to Hire Retired Teachers in the Critical Areas of Need and to be compensated according to the use of experience, uh, degrees earned, and certifications, or licenses in accordance with the approved two thousand and seven, or licenses, in accordance with the approved two thousand seven, two thousand eight compensation plan. Mr. Colunga?
Uh, just, uh, a question on the, uh, uh, approximate, uh, cost in comparison to, uh, long-term subs, uh, substitutes.
Thank you, Dr. Scuella, members of the board. Uh, the cost of a teacher is, is, is well worth it, a certified teacher in the classroom is well worth it, and it, it's goal, as they, as they say, compared to a permanent sub. Um, under No Child Left Behind, we must have certified teachers, even in substitutes now. I, I think, and we'll have a conference presentation coming up here in October to discuss the substitute situation, 'cause we're beginning numerous phone calls. But the law is very clear now, that you must have certified teachers in the content areas, even in substitutes. So, they must meet the, uh, No Child Left Behind criteria of highly qualified teachers. So, even then, when we start paying our substitutes as, as highly qualified, they're, they're in the upper range. So, uh, I believe in getting the best we can, and retired teachers usually have a lot of experience, and then come in and teach, so I support this, whether it costs us a little bit more money, they have a lot more years of experience, but what they're delivering to those children are, are very necessary.
Mr. Aguilar?
And I also believe this is excellent for our school district. Uh, it gives another option for our principals to hire our retirees. The reason is, sometimes we have campuses with long-term substitutes. I would rather have those principals hire our retired teachers, and having to wait until someone comes out of college in December, and, and have a whole semester going with the substitute teachers, and I, and that's a fact in our district. So, this is really a, a good, uh, uh, option that we have as, as the school district.
Aguilar, any other comments? Mr. Powers?
Thank you, uh, Dr. Scuella. I wanna compliment Mr. Gonzalez, because, uh, three years ago, we didn't have it, but last year, we brought this plan into effect, and we're gonna continue with this plan. And I agree with Mr. Aguilar, I'd rather have a, a full certified teacher in, in, in all classrooms if possible. If this is one of the avenues to select, then so be it, and, and it's a small price to pay for, to give our students the best qualified teachers.
Mrs. Galavan?
I just wanna make sure that these are the only critical areas of need that we need.
That's basically it, we've gone over the list.
Science or ESL or?
We covered this. And if, and if there's a critical shortage, we'll certainly come back to the board in another area. If, I have the flexibility to come back to the board if I declare another area as a critical area.
If you have no other comments, do I have a motion to approve Item Fourteen? Motion by Mr. Powers, second by Mr. Aguilar, on favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item Number Seventeen, recommend approval of legal services agreement and fees between Walsh Anderson, Brown Schultz, and Aldridge PC, and the Brownsville School District. Mr. Gonzalez?
Uh, uh, go ahead. Recuse himself, 'cause he's, he's the one that's being negotiated.
That's right.
And, uh, of course, as you well know, Mr. Saldana is no longer on his own. He is with the firm of Walsh Anderson, and that's the board that was determined by the board to be the most highly qualified. They have put forth a contract, uh, with certain fees. I've reviewed those fees, and, uh, I feel, I feel them to be fair for the South Texas area. Um, you go up to, to, to Central Texas, of course, there's a lot, they're a lot higher, uh, than, than that. But a hundred and sixty dollars an hour is very fair for general counsel, especially at a highly specialized area. Hundred and eighty, I don't mind that at all. Uh, Walsh Anderson has been doing this type of workforce anyway, in, in special ed. Bringing general counsel in with the expertise that they bring in. As far as what's coming up in the district, I think it's a very fair price. I, I recommend the contract be, be affirmed by the board.
Mr. Colunga?
On the, uh, uh, legal services, uh, agreement, uh, is there any, um, need for any language on, on, compared to, uh, previous agreements that dealt with, uh, uh, a, a ceiling or, um, uh, ma- maximum hours, not maximum hours, but a certain number of hours before, uh, notice is given, uh, exceeding?
Cap.
Cap, right.
It's certainly something that can be added, um, if the board saw desires, and, and you can cap it. I think we had that cap at, at something around, what's it, fifteen, sixteen thousand?
Hundred and eighty.
Twenty-five, hundred and twenty-five hours, huh?
Hundred and eighty thousand.
Hearing all sorts of numbers, what, what's the cap? What's the real number?
Hundred and eighty hours. So, it, it, it worked out, I think, fourteen, I, I had it worked out. If you all wanna put a cap on it, that's fine, uh, however, let me warn you about the cap on this one. You might wanna put a cap on general counsel services, but not on special ed, 'cause we never had a cap on special ed. Special ed, what's needed is needed. You cannot stop them from saying, "Don't do special ed," 'cause those are highly critical areas, and they've been doing it already, and we never put a cap on special education. However, you wanna put a cap on X number of hours for general counsel, that's fine, I can review that. But that's up to you as board members. I, I think it's fair, I, I don't think Walsh Anderson will abuse it. I think we, whatever we're gonna be sending in, we're gonna be sending in for their review, and, uh, but it's up to you, if you all wanna put a cap on, say, not to exceed a hundred hours, which is sixteen thousand on general counsel, that'd be fine too, per month.
Mr. Powers?
Uh, I, I, I agree with Mr. Gonzalez on this, uh, I think every month we get a, uh, the annualized, the monthly billing anyways. If we see a problem, then we can always bring it back to address it. Uh, but we're growing so big that I don't know how you can put a cap anymore. I agree on the special ed, there's nothing you can do about that one, you cannot put a cap on that one, so. I think we, well, the reports that we've been receiving on a monthly basis, if one of the board trustees have a question on it, we can always put it on agenda for discussion.
Or just call me, and we'll review it, and, and I'll, I'll sit down with, with, with Mike, or, or somebody from Walsh Anderson in Austin, and take care of it.
Mr. Cortez?
Uh, my question is, uh, is this still only for, uh, board council? Or are you all gonna be utilizing the firm for all district needs? I know that at one time, we had talked about you guys, uh, going out for bed on an in-house attorney. I just wanna know where, where Administration is on that.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, uh, Dr. Scuella, members of the board. Uh, McCordle, you're absolutely right. This, right now, we're using them for everything, because they're the only game in town, uh, they say. I have to get reviews on contracts, on agreements, on MOUs, and everything from the legal point, to protect the district. It might cost me a couple of hundred dollars for them to review it, but it's well worth it in the long run to avoid legal problems down the road. Uh, once I get a, 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 uh, an in-house attorney, and we have advertised for it, as soon as we, we get good applicants, we'll be closing in, reviewing them, bringing to the board. He's not put out on BISD, he's put out on, on, just like an employee. He becomes an employee of the district, he or she would become an employee of the district. And they would be used for a lot of general stuff that we do, especially in special ed. Uh, would like to also use that attorney to be my hearing officer, because they know the legal parts of it, and be able to defend the legal part of it. So, we are looking for an in-house attorney. However, general counsel is needed for things as contracts, major contracts for construction, major issues, standard stuff, uh, personnel, MOUs, things that are, are simple, we would have, house an in-house attorney for. However, we need protection from the board, to the board, on large issues. Such as large contracts that were coming up soon. So, they'll be utilized, but then they will also, once we get an in-house, the number of hours will certainly go down substantially, because we won't use them for, for minor stuff that we're using, uh, legal counsel for, at a hundred and sixty dollars an hour for.
Any other comments, questions? If not, do I have a motion, Mr. Powers? I have a power, a motion by Mr. Powers, second by Mrs. Galavan to approve Item Seventeen, on favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item Thirty-one, recommend awarding RFQ Number zero-seven dash one-three-one, insurance consultant services to McGriff, Seebles, and Williams of Dallas, Texas. Services to be, services to be provided, this, subject to district's needs and funding. Uh, Mr. Colunga?
Uh, yes, in view of the, uh, uh, quoted, uh, price on the, the cost of the, uh, consultant services, uh, is, is that, um, um, acceptable to the Insurance Committee? Or has that been reviewed by the committee on the, uh, total cost, or?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, um, yes, as a matter of fact, uh, Dr. Scuella, members of the board, that, they were interviewed by the Insurance Committee at the very beginning, and they selected them, and they thought it was a fair price. Of course, we didn't, you know, we, we had difficulty at that particular time concerning it. However, we'll be watching their billing, and we're, we're gonna be bringing them in and asking them to give us a price before they even start the work, and say, "Okay, here's the task at hand now. I want you to review insurance benefits and make a recommendation, how much you're gonna charge us for that, and we'll look at that." They're not gonna get a blanket, another twenty-five thousand dollars, they're not. We're gonna bring them in and say, "Here's your particular task at hand, how much you're gonna charge us for that, and we will not go over the fifty thousand dollar for the year." Just like we brought them in for twenty-four-nine for the, to review that, that, that we have in here, which is, was our TPAs. Now, we'll use them for the benefit, uh, the part of it, and, and see how that's going to be. And we'll ask them to give us a price, and then we'll bring them in and do that, to work with them. And, uh, we'll be able to control that, but they will not exceed fifty thousand. It might not even get to fifty thousand, it might only get to, to forty thousand, or whatever, depending on what we're gonna use them for. They would certainly not be used for, uh, property and casualty, because they carry our own property and casualties, so they will not be used on that. It'll be just basically on health-type issues.
Mr. Aguilar?
Yes, uh, I think he, they'll be a good consultant for the district, and what I just want, concerned about it, and I want you, uh, Mr. Agent, to understand that we keep tabs on them, to monitor them closely, and when information is asked by any board members, or any, whatever that matter, that it's, they come forward and be upfront with the information with us, that, that we don't have this cat and mouse type of games going on, because there are good consultants, but let's do it, uh, the right way. In fact, um, transfer, Mr. Colunga, the Insurance Committee is one of the recommend, uh, person to recommend, uh, recommend, uh, these consultants, yes, uh-huh.
Good work. Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. Any other comments with Mr. Powers?
Dr. Scuella, thank you. Uh, I think, uh, uh, I agree, uh, on this consulting. It is approved by the Insurance Committee, but the reason why we need it is we do have a new TPA in place. And, uh, we need to make sure the, uh, the benefits and the discounts are coming to us, and they're gonna be our watch eyes on the plan, so it is, it is, it's highly recommended.
And of course, that's why we're having this consultant, uh, Mr. Powers.
Right.
We wanna make sure he protect our services, but I still gonna tell you and the rest of our colleagues that they need to be monitored.
Right, I agree with that.
And then we, we request certain information, that they provide that information.
Right. And, uh, I will, uh, do this, uh, we'll probably be, since it's a new TPA, uh, Mr. President and Mr. Gonzalez, we'll probably have a quarterly insurance meeting every ninety days to review the plan. Where are we at on the claims, where are we at on the discounts, and where are we at on payments?
Okay.
That's not gonna be a problem, Mr. Powers, uh, members of the board, that is exactly what we want them for. We wanna hold somebody accountable.
With that said, do I have a motion to approve Item Number Thirty-one? Motion by Mr. Powers, seconded by Mr. Aguilar, on favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item Ten, Closed Meeting, as pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one. Ed Sec, the board now goes to closed session. The board reconvenes after closed meeting. Moving on to Item Forty-one, Discussion of Real Property, uh, do I have a motion? Uh, Mr. President, I move to table. I have, I have a motion to table indefinitely by Mr. Powers, seconded by Mr. Aguilar, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Is it indefinitely, or the next board meeting?
No, I want it till the next board meeting.
Okay, uh, motion to table, to postpone Item Forty-one until the next regular, regular scheduled board meeting. The second was by Mr. Aguilar, on favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, any other announcements? Okay, our next regular board meeting is on Tuesday, October the second, two thousand seven, here at the Administration Building at five-thirty. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Motion by Mr. Powers, seconded by Mr. Aguilar, on favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.